All right, so we are going to go right into our Select Board meeting. Change our hats for a moment here. So, welcome to the August first, 2022 Select Board meeting. This meeting is also being recorded, broadcast on ECAT, and will be available on demand and broadcast locally. I don't know that I wanted to mention. Oh, the microphones, we will call people up when it's your turn to come to the microphone here. These microphones aren't amplified, but they are broadcast on local cable. If a member of the public has a question or a comment, just wait to be recognized by me, and then we'll ask you to come up to the microphone to make your comment. And we'll ask you to give your name and address for the record. So, starting, we'll do a pledge of allegiance. Just looking around to see where the flag is. Do I pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
The first item we have is a timed public hearing with National Grid and Verizon. Craig, would you like to do the public hearing notice?
Sure. The Select Board of Easton. Let's start that one again. The Select Board of Easton has licensing authorities pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, will hold a public hearing at Frothingham Hall, 15 Barrow Street, Easton, Mass. on Monday, August 1st, 2022, at 6:00 PM, to consider an act on petition of Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, to install one new J.O. pole on Barrow Street, beginning at a point approximately 190 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Barrow Street and Oakland Avenue, in accordance with petition for Plan Number 30530665 dated March 9th, 2022, as shown on file at the Select Board's office.
Great. Do we have anybody here from National Grid or Verizon? Okay. I believe that this is to fix a double pole. No?
Right outside.
Oh.
There was a tree, a guy wiring a tree, so it's a new pole.
Okay, so it's a new pole. Anybody have any questions? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to accept this petition?
So moved. Stebbins.
Second, Barger.
Stebbins and Barger, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next, we have an introduction of the new Deputy Director of Health and Community Services, Community Engagement and Programming, Joseph Pitti. So, Joseph and Kristen, if you want to come up, we're pleased to introduce the new Deputy Director of Health and Community Services, Community Engagement and Programming, Joseph Pitti, to the Select Board. Mr. Pitti was formerly the Assistant Director of Club Sports, Esports, and Business Administration at UMass Lowell, where he facilitated year-round programming for students as well as the greater Lowell community. He has a passion for promoting community health and wellness, and in addition to his professional experience, Mr. Pitti has a Masters of Science in Management of Recreation and Leisure Services. We are glad to have him as part of the town's team, and we look forward to working with you. So, if you want to introduce?
Sure. I want to take this opportunity to introduce all of you and the community to our new Deputy Director, Joe Pitti. Joe joined us back at the end of June, and we've covered a lot of ground in the past month. The day Joe joined us, we were a day out from opening the town pool, so he got a really quick introduction to how Health and Community Services does not operate in a silo and depends on a lot of the other town departments. He's been there, as we worked through the last minute details to open with the DPW. He's been part of the planning for our new Touch a Truck event that we've unveiled at the town pool this summer. It's a partnership between us, by our police, and DPW. I seriously think they all have competition going on, as to who can be the most creative in poses, we had parachuted army men, plastic chainsaws. He's also taken up the task as acting as our liaison for, with the other boards, committees, and groups associated with this, and resulted as One Book One Town Initiative. In fact, he offered to start reading it before we even started here, so we got him a copy to dive into. I think it's really been a great opportunity for Joe to start to meet the community, because just as the book wants us, which is titled Listening is an Act of Love, to listen and realize everybody has a story, it's really given him an introduction to Easton's story and philosophy in a non-traditional way. He's been able to meet with the Lions, and is planning a meet and greet with a bunch of other community groups later this month. He had the opportunity to tour the pickleball courts today, and has researched on how a number of other towns operate their pickleball programs in preparation for guiding us and as we utilize this new resource. I look forward to introducing him to the Full Rep Commission next week, as well as the Council on Aging. He did get to meet some of the commissioners at the races last week. He's already begun to prove himself to be an asset to our mission, and I look forward to working with him as we navigate the task of engaging our whole community in ways that provide them with the limited experiences.
Excellent.
Without further ado, Joe Pitti.
Hi, everybody. I am thrilled to be here and appreciate the support that the town has given me, coming on board. It's been a very fast summer, but I've had a lot of fun throughout all of it, so I first want to thank everybody.
Great. Welcome to the team. Thank you. It's wonderful being here.
Well, we have a lot of things going on. Easton is a very vibrant community, as you know already, with all of the opportunities for recreation, but something that sometimes people don't think about, they think of Recreation Department as little kids and all the things that we do for little kids, but there's also a lot of great things for our older adults, and we just completed an age-friendly action plan, and now we're going to start to flesh out some of those actions that were in there. And they do include a lot of health and wellness for older adults, and so we really want to take care of everyone in the community, from the youngest to the oldest members, and make sure that they all have an opportunity to experience all the great things from the Recreation Department. So, we're really excited to have you on board. I know you have a lot of great ideas that you came with, and we can't wait to see what you do.
Yeah, absolutely. I hope to find a home for everybody who's in the program in one way or another.
Great. Well, thank you for being here. We will see you around in a lot of places. And thank you, Kristen. Next, we have Treasurer Collector Linda Hawks and Chair of the Taxation Aid Committee, Andrew Fleischer. Fleischer, they're going to come to give us an update on the taxation aid committee disbursements with ARPA funding. Thank you for being here tonight, both of you.
Hi. Good evening. How are you doing? I'm going to let Andrew take care of all the statistics, but in addition to updating you on the second round of taxation aid committee funds, which was provided for with ARPA funds, we're also going to give you a brief update on what we've been doing over the past year. Thank you.
Thank you for inviting us. So, looking forward to giving you an update on all the work we've done. It's been a team effort. So, last, last fall was our first round of aid, and that was fully funded through donations that we had received. It was our first year of operations of taxation aid committees, so it was really a limited scope that we were able to administer, but we had four applicants, and we were able to give each of those applicants some money. It worked out to be about $3,700 in that round in December. That was before that we were notified about the ARPA funds that were made available to us. We were extremely excited, and we hit the ground running. $50,000 that we were able to grant to citizens to help pay their property tax bills. We weren't able, due to constrictions, due to, you know, applying with the county, we started late in June. So, we had 59 applicants. Most of those applicants responded to a letter that we had sent. We had sent letters to 235 people who had previously received exemptions, and also veterans who were on a list that we had had. So, of those 59 applicants, we found that 44 met the criteria that we had previously voted on before the meeting. So, there was also a motion made to distribute the funds effectively. So, each applicant had to save $1,136 to go towards paying their property tax bills, which I think is phenomenal. With the rising costs that everybody's experiencing, and the rising costs in home values, it's great to be able to give people this opportunity to stay in their homes. Some of the, you, I believe some of you are familiar with it, but in case you aren't, the criteria that we had used was, we defined elderly as individuals over 60. The fund also applies to disabled citizens of Easton. We only consider citizens who held title to their house for at least one year, and we used 80% of AMI as the cap of income. Just in case you don't know what that means, it's around $56,000 for a single individual, and around $64,000 for two individuals. So, we're looking forward to doing this again this year on a bigger scale, hopefully with a lot more lead-up time to prepare. We do want to tweak the application process a little bit, because we, you know, we wanted something over the last year. So, we want to, we're going to meet in September to kind of consider different criteria that we can add or remove from the application process.
Well, that's great. You know, this was actually an idea of former Select Person Tom Broussard and current Select Person Mark Lamb. They had heard about this in other communities, and when we were talking about some of the things that we were going to be doing in town, like building a new school, and, you know, obviously, the costs of things that are going up, we really thought a lot about the people that that impact the most, and, you know, we looked at, there is going to be an impact to taxes when you have those capital projects, and how can we provide some relief to the people that are vulnerable? So, I'm really happy that, you know, that idea that the board supported, moving that idea forward. If you get your real estate tax bill, which were due today, I just paid mine, you'll see that there's a little piece of paper in there that asks you if you'd like to make a voluntary contribution to this fund. So, $20, $50, $100, whatever people feel like, that's where this money goes to. So, for the people that did contribute in the first round that you were talking about, this is going to be something that's consistent, that we ask the public to all pitch in on, and it's, I hope that people appreciate that you've come forward to talk about this, so that they know that their money really did impact their neighbors and the people that could use it. And I'm sure that you've done a lot of research to get to this point and put a lot of work in, and I'm sure it's, it's tough to establish the criteria, you know, see the people that helped, see if there was anything missing, and readjust. So, really grateful for you and the committee for the work on this.
Thank you, and it really was a team effort. Linda and her office and the Board of Assessors have been extremely helpful, and we wouldn't have been able to do it without them.
That's great. Thank you.
I could put in one more plug. We do have an online, the online capability of making online donations, just in the same spot where you would pay your real estate or excise tax bill. You can also make a donation to the credit fund.
That's great. Excellent.
I'm going to play the naive, because I paid mine probably five minutes before or after I did today online, and I didn't see it, but if I was looking next time, walk me a little bit through that.
With this mailing, there was not a flyer. It was with the actual tax, you know, the actual tax bills that came out in January. The ones that went out in July did not have the flyer with them, but there is an indication on the tax bill that you can help.
But the online, where is it specifically online that you would see?
You would go to the same, on your bill, it says you can pay your payments online by going to easton.us and following the links for online bill pay, and it's there. It's just another option, so instead of selecting to pay real estate, pay excise, it's make a donation.
Great.
And you can make a donation to the Veterans Aid Fund also.
Fantastic.
So, if Jamie wanted to contribute now, because he missed the deadline, how would he do that? Would he just write a check to?
We like to say "hansburg."
Write a check to, and me, I'm going to throw myself under the bus, too. We could write a check to the town and just make in the memo line what it, that it's for the taxation aid.
Yes.
And you can donate on it at any time, even if you don't have a current bill due. So, that's what's a great feature of that.
That is great. Okay, and just also to kind of throw in another plug, because we do have Health and Community Services here, there is places on the website that talk, there's a whole list of ta, you know, tax relief programs, or other sources of financial support for, for energy support and relief that are all on, online, and you can contact that department if you don't have access to a computer to ask about that. So, I'm really happy that the town has so many offerings to try to reach a lot of people that really need it.
Super proud to be in a community that thinks this way, and as a veteran, to see that veterans, unlike myself, who are, you know, having a tough time, have, you know, a great outreach, especially in Corey, and making sure that, because a lot of times they don't step up, right? There's stigma associated with that, but Corey's good at eliminating that. I think this group is doing a really good job of eliminating that.
Yeah, we want anybody who, anybody who knows someone, or may think that you're eligible to just go ahead and apply. You know, the more, the more we give awareness of this fund, the better. So, we really hope that that happens in the next couple of years.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments on the board?
On, on that note, so the Tax Aid Committee does have a website. If you go to easton.us and go to Boards and Committees, they're there for tax aid. And so, this was the first, this is your second round. It was the first one that had ARPA funding contributed towards it. What is your timeframe? I know you're meeting in the fall, and the goal is to have the application period open.
The general, the general idea would be to follow the timeframe we used last fall, which was to make a decision by the end of December.
Okay.
So, we, I believe that, Linda will correct me, I believe that we have to wait again for approval on, on use for the funds.
Right, but that should be a much simpler ask this time, because it's already been pre-cleared.
Yeah, but other, other than that, I believe we're ready, we'll be ready to, to go.
In the fall.
We, yeah, we haven't, we haven't set up a specific date, but I believe what we did last time was open, open applicants for about a month.
Great.
Into November, and then make the decision and notify them in December.
Great.
So, we'll probably follow this in a similar time.
That's great. And so, Linda and Andrew and I have spoken about this previously, and it's in the Town's ARPA plan. The Tax Aid Committee was really flexible and really great to get frankly any of this out the door in time, with the Bristol County application process we had to do. But it's our intent to see double that amount of money this summer, so that they have $100,000, up to $100,000 to work with in this current fiscal year. You know, it's, the donation aspect is critical, but obviously, we have access to this generational investment from the federal government that is unlikely to repeat. And, you know, when you get 400 pages of U.S. Treasury regulation that say you could disperse money, if you have pre-existing means-tested programming, which usually municipal governments don't have, thankfully, the Tax Aid Committee had actually done all of that work on the front end, so it was a really, a bit of a long shot, and the county auditors looked at it and thought, well, that's neat, but we don't know if that meets the idea, and they cleared it, said it did, and the Tax Aid Committee was really great, great partner in that. So, thank you for that, and we'll be pushing information out publicly as we approach the fall, and have those specific dates, so that we could try to help people out.
Well, thank you to you and the committee, and thank you, Linda, for your guidance and assistance, and to Corey as well.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, next, we have some one-day liquor licenses. The first one is Stone Hill College, the Women's Ice Hockey Preseason Banquet. It's going to be held at Donovan Hall, 320 Washington Street, Friday, September 23rd, 2022, 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. An Easton Police Detail is not required for this event. Would somebody like to make a motion?
So moved. Barger.
Second, Stevens.
Barger and Stevens, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Next is Stone Soup LLC, doing business as Linnwater Farm. It's Farm Pizza Night, 215 Washington Street, Friday, August 26th, with a rain date of August 27th, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. They, they, it was smart of them to give a rain date for that as well. I think we're all hoping for a little bit of rain, not to rain out anybody's event, but we certainly need some. An Easton Police Detail is not required for this event either, and it says Rory was, Rory O'Dwyer will be present to share details?
Kate O'Dwyer.
Kate O'Dwyer, okay. Come on up, Kate. Good to see you again.
Good to see you, too. Yeah, so we're hoping to have, we had a farm pizza night earlier this summer, and we're going to do it again before the kids all go back to school, so just a wood-fired pizza with our farm vegetables, and have the music, and hoping to find Frank's show down there.
Terrific. Can you tell us a little bit more about what's going on down at the farm? The giant, beautiful building that's being built there?
Yeah, it's getting, it's getting there. We're in the final stretch now, so doing a lot of finish work, hoping to be done in about six weeks or so.
And what's going to be in there?
So, it's going to be our new farm store. So, basically, if you've been to the farm recently, everything that's out under our tent now, we'll be moving in there. And then quickly over the winter, we'll do some work in the kitchen back there, too. Today, we're using sauce and chopping vegetables and things like that.
That's great.
Yeah.
Well, I've had the, the pizza from that grill, and honestly, it's like the best pizza ever, so I would encourage families to go, and it's really like amazing. We talk about the things that we see in town that are wonderful, and, you know, to drive by when you guys are having a family event, and you're just going past, and you see, it's like a Norman Rothwell painting out there with like, everybody, just all generations having a nice time, and it's, it's hard to remember what it looked like before, you know, the farm was there. It's really, just fits in perfectly.
Yeah, thank you.
I was just going to say, as a family, too, Kate, yes, thank you, when we're out there with the kids, and whether you guys are hosting for the Easton Youth Baseball League, and all the opportunities that we get, the chance to be out there, it's, everyone looks forward to it. Kids are, everyone's got something to do. I think the adults get a little more excited than that, especially when Shell Town shows up, but, so yes, we look forward to seeing Frank as well, but pizza's amazing, and the atmosphere is incredible.
Thank you.
We were lucky, got to go to the water this year, and it was, I mean, it was 8:30, and I'm like, wow, I had to remember that for four hours. Where did the time go? We were just talking, everybody had a great time, so awesome, awesome event.
Me, thank you.
Thank you.
Craig?
I just thank Kate for being a part of Easton. We unfortunately haven't been able to be to one of your events, but I certainly will make my wife aware of this one.
Yeah, okay.
So, looking forward to it.
Oh, good. Thanks.
All right, excellent. So, would somebody like to make a motion to award that one-day beer and wine license for Friday, August 26th, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM?
So moved. Barger.
Second, Stevens.
Barger and Stevens, all in favor? Unanimous. Great, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Good to be there.
And next, we have a common victualer license transfer for FB Enterprises Incorporated, doing business as Dunkin' Donuts, to DZ Donuts LLC, doing business as Dunkin' Donuts at 606 Washington Street, and we have an application in our packet to transfer the common victualer license. The application's been reviewed by town departments and recommended that the board consider approval contingent on the applicant satisfying pre-opening inspection requirements and obtaining a new food service permit with the Board of Health. We don't have anyone here from Dunkin' Donuts, correct? Nope. Okay, anybody have any comments or questions on this? It looks like a pretty simple change. Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to approve this common victualer license transfer?
So moved. Barger.
Second, Stevens.
Barger and Stevens, all in favor? Unanimous. Great. All right, next, we have Town Clerk Danielle Sicard is going to give us some updates on the new election laws, the Votes Act, vote by mail, and the fall election. Hi, Danielle, thanks for being here.
Nice to see you. It's been a while since I've seen you, not in boxes on Zoom screens, so it's really nice. I thought I would give you an update, as I usually do, prior to a state or federal election cycle. My office is in full swing already, as we're knee-deep in vote-by-mail applications. I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update in regards to the changes to election laws, that we were anxiously waiting, so that we could start preparing for these new laws. So, in your packets, you should have some information, just a kind of a one-pager on it. I'll just give you a quick overview of that. These are the changes that came out of the Votes Act. The first one is the voter registration deadline, which has changed from, um, to 5:00 PM on the 10th day prior to an election. Previously, that was 20 days prior to an election. Vote by mail has now become a permanent option for all voters for primaries, state elections as well as local elections. There is an opt-out mechanism, should you want to opt out for a local election, but it will be required from, from this point forward without any further action. The Secretary of the Commonwealth is required to mail out voter applications to any registered voter, 60, that is registered 60 days prior to each federal or state election, and it's a posted prepaid application. You probably have already received yours. If you haven't, the application is still available on our website. But I'd like to just kind of talk just a little bit about that, so that there is no voter confusion on how that works. So, for every single state or federal election, every voter will receive a postcard. So, people who just received a postcard before the September 8th, excuse me, September 6th election, receive that postcard, and if they choose not to vote, is return that one and say that they want an application, they're going to receive another one before the November election. That is part of the Votes Act. It's not coming from my office. It's required that the Secretary of the Commonwealth does that.
So, that's just the request to ask for a ballot? That's not a ballot?
Correct. Yep, they just have to sign it and return it. As I said, it's supposed to be prepaid, and then we would process their application. The postcard does allow for voters to select just the September primary, just the November 8th election, or both. So, if they don't choose to do all elections right now, or just return it with the November election, then they're going to get another postcard. So, it is prepaid, as I mentioned. It does set the deadline to apply for a vote-by-mail ballot to the fifth day prior, business day prior to election at 5:00 PM. Previously, that was four days prior. And history shows through the social services that we need just a little more time, so I would encourage voters that want to get a vote-by-mail ballot, that they apply as early as they possibly can. And also, the Votes Act also aligned both absentee and vote-by-mail regulations, which reduces some confusion, especially in all town clerks' offices. So, the deadline to apply to have a ballot mailed to you, whether it's an absentee or a vote-by-mail, that deadline remains the same now. Family members now can apply for other family members for either of those options, and there's a clarification in regards to deceased voters. So, if we receive a ballot back, and it's been cast prior to their death, that ballot would be able to be cast on their behalf. Mostly, that's because of another feature, which we had in 2020, that is now part of the Votes Act, which does allow for advanced tabulation or advanced opening of all ballots that we do receive back. This is an option. We're still waiting for further regulations from the Secretary's office, but in 2020, we did take advantage of being able to do that in advance. Basically, that provides my office the ability to handle opening all of the vote-by-mail ballots that have been returned, and/or depositing them into tabulators for voters, as opposed to waiting for election day in order to do that. So, depending on, you know, what our returns look like, we have not yet decided whether we'll do that in September. I would imagine, we already have 1,300 applications in three days of mail, since they've come in, so right now, we're tracking to have quite a big amount of them, and as I mentioned, we're in full swing with my advanced mailing house to prepare those to, to go out. It also, the Votes Act also expands early voting in person. So, early voting in person will now be permanently offered for primaries in addition to the state elections in November. The early voting in person for a primary is one week prior and one weekend. The weekend hours now are required to be six hours on the weekend, and a minimum of three hours. So, you'll see in our voter options guide that we're planning on doing nine to three for both elections on our Saturday required dates for the weekend hours. For the state election, the Votes Act also expands it to two weeks and two weekends. Prior, it was just the two, two weeks of business days, so now weekends are being required for that. The first week of early voting for a November election is only required to be open for 50% of our business hours, whereas the second week is, well, the week just prior to the election would be 100% of our business hours. So, let's see. Police officers at the polling location is another change that has been made. This one seems slightly interesting. We are going to talk about that from a vote perspective, but essentially, I would always put a request into the police chief. The police chief then would hire the detailed officers based on my request, and that Mass. General Law changed slightly in the Votes Act, which provides the Select Board with the authority. Now, charged the detailing of sufficient numbers, and my request to you will be that you make that a minimum of one per polling location, and that you authorize the, the chief to go ahead and, and schedule those officers, as opposed to yourself. So, that's the summary of the Votes Act. I don't know if you have any, any other questions?
Will we have to do that by way of a, a public vote, or is that administrative?
No, it will be a vote that I will ask for.
You'll remind us.
Yes.
Excellent. Any comments or questions?
Question Danielle, we, you send back and you wanna, you wanna have the vote by mail?
Yep.
Do you send it back or to the ballot or does it come from the Secretary of State's office?
No, that's done. So when you return your vote by mail application, that does come back directly to my office?
Right.
For Easton voters and we do put together the packages and send those ballots out.
And you've already received, how many, you say thirteen hundred?
Yes, in three days mail, we have thirteen hundred applications that will come back.
How many you in COVID had to lean on your poll workers to basically turn Town Hall into a mailhouse? That's why we're not at Town Hall right now. The corona room is being sequestered for the next three months.
Absolutely, yeah, that's exactly effectively what we're doing. We, I call it advanced mailing house and so we do have election workers that come in and they help us put those packets together in the polling.
Excellent.
Jamie?
As, as you were talking, I was thinking about the massive amount of moving pieces that you have to respond to in relation to this and kind of answer the question, how it's just how are you doing this, like you know, so quickly, but?
Yeah, I agree. It is, it's an awful lot. We're all for voter options to be expanded, but at this stage of the game, we are running three major things at the same time. So the vote by mail, we had seven, over seven thousand ballots in two thousand and twenty for November that the advanced mailing house was handling. And then we also had another eight hundred and two thousand that were there for early voting in person. Of course, we have no idea how many people are showing up for early voting in person, so it's like running a mini-election every day for the two weeks prior to that and at the same time putting together a thirteen hour election day. Yeah, so it's a, it's an awful lot. I do feel like we're ahead of the game because we had the idea that this was gonna kind of come through and that we have a process and a system that we're fine tuning now and luckily, we have some great election workers who are helping on all, all three of those.
And you've also been paving the way for advanced technology with different, the polling pads and things like that over the years, leading up to any changes that would happen. So that was really great planning on your part, so I know that some communities were really scrambling to catch up with the technology part during COVID and you know, you had everything under control, so we appreciate that expertise. And I think that it's great to talk about some of these nuances, you know, the polling workers, uh you know, I look at them, I always try to thank them when I'm there because they're there for a long time that day and you know, in all kinds of weather and all kinds of temperatures and it's really great that you can depend on so many people to come out on that day. And I guess what I just wanna say in wrapping up what you said, so basically, the summary of what I heard is there's absolutely no excuse to say that you didn't vote and you know, you can do it at a variety of places, days, times, mail, in person. And I think every year, there's a lot of reasons to vote and I think I would just ask young people to remember when you turn eighteen or just a little before you're turning eighteen to remember as that birthday gift to yourself, go down and get registered to vote or you can do it online as well, so.
Yeah, that's a great summary. I will recommend anybody who doesn't know how you wanna vote in any of these fall elections that they take a look at the, our voter options guide. That can be found at W W W dot easton dot M A dot U S backslash voter option guide dot P D F. That outlines all three of like Johnny just mentioned, all the regulations regarding vote by mail, links to the applications, when is the deadline, all of that information about vote by mail is in there. The application, if you did not receive a postcard, is also available at W W W dot easton dot M A dot U S backslash vote by mail dot P D F. You're gonna have a theme kind of happening here. Voters who did already send in an application or once we've mailed ballots, they can also track their ballot. That is at W W W dot track my ballot M A dot com. That will tell you when it's, if it says it's pending, that basically means we've received your application and we're in the process of producing your packets to go out. I do tend to do a lot of social media when we're sending out the packets and I anticipate that our first batch will go out by Monday, the eighth, and I would let everybody know since this date to this date, these applications have already been processed and will be sent out. But each individual, instead of calling our office or emailing us, you can track that yourself at every step of the way. Once it's been mailed, you can also go to the track my ballot site and see that it has been mailed and same with once it's been returned. So once you put that into the drop box or mailed it, you can again go back and see whether or not we've received it and it's ready to be passed. Any questions about vote by mail? I would ask voters to go and email us at vote by mail at easton dot M A dot U S. That's the easiest way for us to kind of keep a handle on questions specific to voting by mail. Early voting in person, information on that in addition to our voter option guide could be found at W W W dot easton dot M A dot U S backslash early voting. As I mentioned, for the primary, we'll have the first vote of early voting starting on Saturday, August twenty-seventh from nine A M. to three P M. And then for the following week, the early voting will be during regular business hours, all of those who are at Town Hall. Voting on Election Day, for information on that, I would ask voters to go to W W W dot easton dot M A dot U S backslash know before you vote dot P D F. That has everything that you would need to know in advance, including links like checking out what the sample ballots look like, which can also be found on W W W dot easton dot M A dot U S backslash sample ballots. And also, as you know, we did make changes to our precincts, precincts with the redistricting. And so if you're going to be voting on Election Day, I would also ask voters to kind of take a look at what their precinct is in advance of showing up on Election Day. And that can be found at W W W dot easton dot M A backslash what's my precinct dot P D F. Voter registration deadline is Saturday, the twenty-seventh, which is the first day of early voting as well. So if a voter has a question, they can do that online, but they certainly can come to the town offices until five P M. in order to change their voter registration or their party enrollment. Yes.
You also have a very helpful consolidated URL that has everything, right?
We do.
Which is just easton dot M A dot U S slash vote.
That's right.
That has everything.
Correct. If you go to that page, you should be able to get to any of those other pages or any of those other links that we sent. And if you, I'm gonna repeat that one that Connor just said, but also repeat the voter option guide. Those two are gonna give you any information that you need. So as you mentioned, it's W W W dot easton dot M A dot U S backslash a vote and W W W dot easton dot M A backslash voter option guide dot P D F. Those will give you all of the information that you need. Educated voters are our friends and planning ahead is also gonna be beneficial to the voter and to ourselves. The postal service can take up to eleven days for the ballots to get to somebody and back, so keeping that in mind and applying early is important.
I also would like to acknowledge the amount of work that you and your staff and volunteers put in through the changes in the precincts. I hope everybody remembers that we went to a population of over twenty-five thousand people now, which mean we had to create a seventh precinct and then we had to split a precinct and that was a lot of work. So I really, my hat's off to you and your staff for doing that.
Yeah. And honestly, it just continues now because we're basically functioning as eight precincts for their, for the state elections. So we've gone from six to eight precincts, but got a great team around us to make that happen, so thank you for your comments. I appreciate that.
There was enough, is there any funding attached to the Votes Act?
So the only funding that will, that we're aware of that will continue is anything through the local unfunded mandate. And so early voting in person is a local unfunded mandate and so we'll continue to submit through the auditor's office all of the information around that. We haven't gotten official ruling on the vote by mail, but my, my guess is based on two thousand and twenty that there will be some things that will be approved for that. A reimbursement for postage, for instance. We do have to upfront the postage, but that will be something I would continue to keep track of in addition to keeping track of the number of hours that my election, what goes I work on for any of those things, so that anything that we could be reimbursed for, we will submit.
I, I just wanna add, echoing some of the board's comments, I think Danielle and her staff, because the expanded access is wonderful. Just administratively, you are now, when you have these bi-annual election cycles, you'll have multiple weeks, right? Three weeks plus three weekends and in this case, through a holiday weekend where you have to work sometimes twenty-two days consecutively? Is that right?
Yep.
So thank you.
You're welcome.
That's rather extraordinary.
I agree, I agree.
So the next item is the discussion and vote regarding the police officer details at election. Do we need to add more to that or do you have something?
Unless you have any questions on it, essentially, I think the vote is in your packet that I'm asking for and the way it's been written, it basically would cover, I won't be coming back to you before every election asking you to do this. I'd be asking you for a vote that says, you know, therein from now on, there is, until you tell me otherwise, this is how we will function.
Okay, that's what I, I didn't say it the way I meant it, but that's what I meant when I was saying administratively, do we have to do this every time? So that's excellent.
I think the way it's written would allow for this not to have to come to you every time.
So Danielle, what, how many officers are you looking for and how would you have them spread out?
So generally, we only, we're only required at the polling location to have one. And so that's generally what we do. However, in consultation with the police chief, there are times that we actually increase that and we usually have those conversations. So the vote that I'm asking for basically says that you're putting back the power to the chief to actually assign a minimum of one per polling location.
Okay, the reason I, the reason I ask it is having spent many days on, at the polls, especially when there's school in session.
Yes.
That that parking lot that really should be for voters is always difficult.
A problem, yeah.
Trying to keep people out of there or students out of there so that if there was an officer right there, plus that intersection gets a little scary when kids are coming in and people are coming in to vote too, so.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have it budgeted to do more than the, than that, but safety obviously is, is prime. So we, in two thousand and twenty, there was a lot of concerns around Election Day voting and safety of election officials and other voters. At the time, things were pretty energized and so we did in consultation with the police chief, had additional and found the funding to be able to do that. And so I think that we would continue to look at that in the same way that we have been asked. So I can't guarantee and say to you, yes, at every, you know, primary, that makes sense. So if, for instance, if we usually have five thousand voters who attend on average for a primary and we end up having three thousand ballots that are being returned, will we say we need to consider an officer outside? Those are the things that instead of coming to you to say, how many do you want to say at each polling location, I would recommend that you authorize that to happen between the police chief and myself.
Craig, do you wanna make that motion?
So I, I move that we authorize the police chief to make the decision.
There's a record.
I apologize. I'm sure I saw it, I just couldn't pull it up. Hold on one second, let me get to it. Move to approve a sufficient number of police officers, but not less than one at the polling location at every election therein to preserve order and to protect the election officers and supervisors from any interference with their duties and to aid in enforcing the laws relating to elections as required by section seventy-two of Mass General Law, chapter fifty-four, which was changed in section thirteen of chapter ninety-two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two. Further, move to designate the police chief the authority to assign specific police officers according to scheduling and availability. The town clerk will advise the police chief on the location and time the officer or officers are needed.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second, Stebbins.
So that's Barger and Stebbins, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Danielle.
Okay, next, we have the Easton Cultural Council appointment, John Farrows. This is for our term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. John, thanks for your patience. You've gotten to see our whole meeting so far. We appreciate you being here.
Absolutely.
So if you would just like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your background and what makes you interested in being a part of the Cultural Council?
Sure. So my name is John Farrows. I live at sixty Cosma Road. I've been a resident of Easton now for three years, but I know that makes me look like quite a newbie, but actually, this is my second time moving and living here in Easton. In the late nineties, I lived here for several years. Work required me to move in two thousand and three and I was in the Atlanta area. I lived there for a little over fifteen years and then work compelled me to come back up here and my job is in Canton. And I was happy to come back up here and once again, look at Easton as my home again. So I really do enjoy Easton. I really love this town. I think this town has a lot going for it. I love the, the center of town with these incredible H. H. Richardson buildings that we have and I'm a little bit of a nerd when it comes to those kind of things. I'm not an architect, I'm a, a mechanical engineer by trade and those things kind of fascinate me. Um, you know, the fact that, that I kind of have this attraction back to, to Easton, I was sort of, I was compelled to say, you know, what can I do to get involved? What can I do to give back and what else, what else than, other than a volunteer type of role? So I was looking at the Easton website and I saw that there were some volunteer roles that were open and the one that moved me was the one for the cultural committee. And the reason being is that I, I actually looked at the website to see what the reason for this cultural committee was all about. And one of the things that struck me was, and I'm quoting here, quote, "It's there to, quote, encourage excellence in the arts, humanities, and sciences," unquote. And when I looked at what was being done in the past, I didn't see much for the sciences. And with my engineering background, I thought to myself, you know, maybe I can help somehow to encourage that aspect that it seems to be one-sided. How does there anything wrong with arts and humanities? But what about the, the, the sciences? And so like I said, I was moved to, to just throw my hat into the ring and say, hey, I'm interested in this. It's a, it's an opportunity for me to do something for the town and hopefully, any thoughts, any talents that I can bring to the table will, will be a positive thing.
Terrific. Craig, do you have any questions?
No, I just wanna thank you very much for, for volunteering. That's one of the joys we have is being able to hear from people who wanna volunteer, the numbers of people who wanna engage. So thank you for that, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, John. Thanks for volunteering.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I love your enthusiasm and the, your way of thinking about this intersection between science and the arts communities together. It's really great, so thank you.
Thank you.
So for people at home, there's a lot of confusion. For me, it took me a while to get the difference. So we have a cultural district and the cultural district works, there's a map of that and it goes from Oaks Ames Hall, it includes the downtown businesses, it includes the trustees of reservations, property, the Governor Ames Estate, all the way down to Langwater Farm. And so that and the library and everything in the middle there. And so the cultural district management partners work on trying to connect all those resources to share information about events and to really attract people to that downtown area to patronize and spend their money. Part of the, the mission of the district also is to offer, to really look for grants and to offer opportunities for people that lower no cost because we feel that it's important that the arts be available to everyone. So Carolyn Cole was the one who ran that for many years, started that district and unfortunately, she passed away this past year. So we're trying to, this, the committee is trying to keep up those events and you know, keep, keep trying to move those forward. The cultural council, on the other hand, is, oh, and another thing with the cultural district is they also encompass the art gallery, which, which is part of that. The cultural council accepts applications from community members, from arts, sciences, and, and cultural organizations looking for grant funding. So that is about to come up in the October timeframe. I would look for that in September for applications. And so what your committee does is you vote on who gets that funding and what amount they do. I think it's really a great observation that the sciences may not have been included in some, some of that funding, which to me means we need to do a good job at outreach to people so that they know that that's a part of, you know, a part of what we're interested in. So I really appreciate that observation. I think you'll like reviewing those applications with the team and being a part of that whole ecosystem of arts and culture, tourism and economic development in not only just the downtown part of the town where the cultural district is, but really for, for our whole, our town as a whole. So and also, I love your story that you lived in Easton, you moved and you came back. What a, what a sales pitch that is. We should have that little cameo on our, on our website.
That's true.
So thank you for choosing Easton to come back to again. So with that, Craig, if you wanna make the motion to?
Move to appoint John Farrows to the Easton Cultural Council with a term expiration of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Move to appoint John Feros to the Eastern Cultural Council with a term expiration of June 30th, 2025.
Second, Stevens.
So that's Barger and Stevens, and this is a roll call vote?
Barger Feros?
Stevens Feros.
Stacy Feros.
And Full Chanetti Feros. So congratulations, and you'll get something from the town clerk's office, giving you the instructions, how to get sworn in and when to begin joining the meetings.
Great, well, thank you very much, everyone.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
All right, next, we have a discussion and vote on the Eastern Tricentennial Committee in Charge. The 300-year anniversary of the Town of Easton is in 2025. We have a draft charge for the proposed tricentennial committee attached in our packet for review. So the charge, the mission, the purpose of the tricentennial committee is to lead the town in a year-long celebration of Easton's tricentennial, which is 1725 to 2025. That commemorates Easton's long history, engages all Easton residents, and celebrates Easton's enduring 300-year tradition of community spirit. The committee's mission shall be to celebrate the strong Easton town spirit that thrives in our community, to offer diverse programming that is welcoming and inclusive of all Easton residents, to strengthen bonds of family and community with events that bring people together, to involve local youth in cooperation with schools in varied and fun educational opportunities, to recognize the positive and lasting impact of contributions made by Easton community members, to connect the present and the past by coordinating, sharing and supporting historical events, to provide a stage for, for, and spotlight on Easton art, music and culture, both current and past, to collaborate with, support and encourage all Easton nonprofits, commissions, committees and town departments in taking advantage of the unique opportunity the tricentennial offers to educate the public and to share their own history, goals and mission. For the membership, the committee shall be comprised of up to nine members, serving one-year terms, and the subject, and subject to annual reappointment by the select board. So the tasks that they would undertake are to conduct outreach into the community, to ask for suggested events that residents would be interested in attending, partner with local businesses, community organizations, nonprofits and town departments to develop events that appeal to all ages and encourage the greatest participation of all Easton residents and friends, plan and coordinate a series of events for the recreational, educational and cultural benefit of the community that will serve to commemorate Easton's heritage and will lead to greater knowledge and appreciation of our history and future, develop a strategy to fundraise for the tricentennial events, create a master calendar of events and develop marketing materials to disseminate information about the events hosted by the tricentennial committee, its partners and friends of Easton, and encourage and support other community organizations to host events that highlight their group's mission and the connection to the history of Easton. So that looks like a lot of work. And we're really eager to hear from people that want to be a part of this. I know that I, some people have outreach to me already. And we'll ask them to, this will be on the website under the volunteer section, I presume?
Yes, if the board adopts it. So we, we drafted this last week based on what some other communities have done for major milestones, and it's consistent with what the town did for its 275th. But I won't report to have done this before, I was not around the 275th. So if the board has any feedback on the charge, we could, we could make edits to membership or things of that nature. Alternatively, we're happy to proceed with this and advertise it. Some, some committee charges you've adopted over the years are very specific carve-outs for members from certain boards, but nothing with a general membership like this would prohibit the board from soliciting those folks because obviously, you know, there's some groups who are already pretty excited about this. So that's up to the board, but either way, if you have just a general membership, you could point anyone you would like.
Did you have a color or a question?
My children are excited because our house is 244 years old, so they want to do tours through the Easton Hayward Family House.
That's a great idea.
They're going to volunteer.
Terrific.
It's exciting.
It's, it's very exciting, and, you know, people have been talking about it and asking me when we were going to get this started for a while. So there's a lot of interest and enthusiasm in the committee, in the community. I think that, you know, when I was looking at it, nine members, it's got, you know, part of me thinks, oh, it's going to be hard to find, we're probably going to have a lot of people volunteering for this until we look down to nine members. And I remember several times over the years where we've had that happen. And in our enthusiasm to want to include everyone, we voted to expand the membership to a bigger amount. And then what happens is you can't meet quorum because people can't make it. So, so what I would say is, we have the nine people in this core committee, but these are public meetings. And I would hope that even if we have nine appointed members, we have tons of community people come to these meetings and bring their voice, bring their ideas, and be a part of this incredible opportunity. So people, please be thinking about that out there, and that way you can come to as many or as few meetings as you want, and we can, we can hear what everybody wants to do. So if there's no ideas to change or amend anything on here, we'll take a vote to accept this, this charge and put that on the town website to start looking for volunteers.
Donnie, the other thing I would question is about the leadership of the committee and whether or not we, we should have some town employees involved in.
So ideally, we would, but frankly, we have no bandwidth to assign someone to a multi-year project like this. We will be working with them for certain. A good example is I very much want fireworks. Fire chief probably needs to be involved in that. Probably just got myself in trouble. But I, I would request we not specifically charge a town staff person with being responsible for it. This is, you know, I, I don't think we have done so in the past. And I just fear, you know, we, there's, I can't think of a single department where I could give this to. I think we'll have enough energized volunteers and we'll certainly support them as we can.
But I also think that the grassroots organizing for something like this is really important, that it be from the people. But one thing that, that I do think of when you say that, Craig, is perhaps there should be a select board member that's a part of this because when you have a group of people that have ideas, they won't know where to go or who to bring what to, so maybe we could.
I, I have a great person I think should be on that committee.
Oh, no.
I shouldn't be looking at you, no, I was looking at somebody else.
But we could have that as an ex officio, perhaps?
Uh, sure. I, I, that's perfectly reasonable. So we could have a nine member. I, I can't imagine, although strange things have happened, I can't imagine a ten person that is going to result in a lot of five-five, majorly contentious votes.
Well, the select board person doesn't have to vote if that was, you know, but.
You should, by default, be there.
Yeah. All right, why don't we amend it to include a select, an appointee from the select board to be a part of that?
As part of the nine or as, for 10?
We'll do it for 10.
Okay, 10's fine.
Okay.
Okay, and that'll be appointed annually as well at our annual appointment. So that was a good point, Craig. All right, a motion to, to accept the tricentennial committee in charge as amended?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Stevens.
Barger and Stevens, all in favor? unanimous. Excellent, thank you. Next, we have a series of contracts with the DPW. So we will go through all of these. The first one is, well, first of all, welcome, thank you for being here tonight, David.
Good evening.
For everybody knows who you are, but for those that might not, this is David Field, DPW director. And so the first contract is Peterbilt Store of New England for two zip wheel cab and chassis, DPW 2023-02.
Thank you, Donnie. So this is a part of the slate of contracts I brought to your last meeting. This contract at that time was not ready at that time, but this will be the purchase of two six-wheel cab and chassis, it's a typo in there, sorry about that. It'll be purchased under the Greater Boston Police Council Prepariment Contract. The total contract amount is $284,218.
$248,000, or?
Two, sorry, $284,000.
We, we had a typo.
$218, I apologize for any typos in the agenda.
Okay. Any comments or questions? So would somebody like to make a motion to award contract DPW 2023-02 to Peterbilt Store of New England for two zip wheel cab and chassis?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Stevens.
Barger and Stevens, all in favor? unanimous. Okay, the next one is a contract award for tie and bond, a computer model of the town's water systems, and this is contract DPW 2023-09.
Yes, this is for a hydraulic model of our system, something that's been contemplated for a long time to help us optimize, optimize operations of the water system, look at potential changes and other impacts to various type of infrastructure we would do with the water system. It's highly recommended. Tying Bond is one of our on-call vendors for water engineering, and the total contract amount is $36,700.
What, what is a hydraulic?
So basically, it's a, it's a mo, it's a way to model your system to find out impacts. So if we, we can look at where one particular well, under different circumstances, where that water's going. Or we could, if we wanted to replace some pipes, maybe we want to upsize lines and what the impact of those changes in diameter would be on the entire system, help us optimize our operations, tank levels versus pumping levels at various, we have seven different wells. So as a well's pump at different times, pressure changes and flow changes. So this helps us to have a better understanding of our system.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, could I get a motion to award tie and bond, computer model of the town's water system, DPW 2023-09?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Stevens.
Barger and Stevens, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
That was it for you, okay?
That's it for me.
Thank you, Danielle.
Have a good night.
Next, we have a vote for Unionville Pickleball Ramco State Company Incorporated. This is change order number one for contract PCD 2022-05. Stephanie, thanks for being here tonight.
You're welcome, thank you for having me. As the select board knows, the funding, CPA funding for the supplemental funding for the pickleball courts was voted at annual town meeting. And Janet Bogman reversed a contract, our CPA amount, $377,000. So $573,650 was approved for construction of the pickleball court. The low bidder came in at $377,499.50. They have started construction, they've done a significant amount of the grading already. During that process, they had to excavate some additional ledge entrenching to accommodate fencing. They've come across quite a bit of rocks that needed to be removed and hammered out. Additionally, the bid documents called for the Wilson Deluxe Pickleball Post and Net System that was requested by the pickleball advocates in town, the folks that play the game. Those posts and nets are not available until mid-October. This project is slated to complete by the end of November. And actually, it's, it's moving probably a bit ahead of schedule at this point. So to wait for delivery of those posts in particular would delay the project. You need these sleeves that the posts slide into. You install them at the time you're doing your paving and your subgrade so that they're very securely tightened. These change requests have been reviewed by J.K. Holmgren. They are our owner's project manager for the project and approved, and I recommend execution of this change order. It will bring the total contract amount from $377,499.50 to $406,499.50.
No, I just was amazed by seeing all those rocks. That was, it was quite something.
Quite a few.
Yeah.
Okay, well, could I get a motion to, to amend change order number one to PCD 2022-05, Ramco State Company, and, and change order value of $29,000?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Stevens.
Barger and Stevens, all in favor? Unanimous.
Stephanie, I'm sorry, if you set this, when, when is it anticipated to be finished? Construction?
So the target date is November 30th. If everything continues as it's going, I would expect it will probably be around October. And October might even be earlier.
How long do people play pickleball into the year?
As long as they can. Until the snow falls or it's too bitter cold.
As long as somebody wants to shovel the pickleball.
So, so pickleball party is this fall?
We are hoping to have a ribbon cutting this fall, yes.
So we could have a party at the pickleball, then we could go across the street to Langwater Farm and have a pizza party.
Yes.
That all works out?
Yes. But we have to stop at the beanery first.
That's right. And get pizza all the way from, from the villa. Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay, next, we have Southeastern Regional Services Group for contract awards for paper supplies, WB Mason. We have an attached recommendation submitted by Sursage for the award of paper products for fiscal year 2023 to WB Mason. The town administrator recommends approval of Sursage's recommendation of contract awards for paper supplies for fiscal year 2023. Town administrator, Assistant Town Administrator Michael Blanchard manages the town Sursage contract, and he can answer any questions. This is pretty typical, we do this every year.
Right, exactly, yeah. Just for better, in case people don't know, Sursage is a group of 23 communities that group together to share procurement services. We save costs on the procurement process, and also, hopefully through group bidding, we also save costs there as well.
Okay, terrific. Any questions from the board? Okay, would you, would somebody like to make a motion to award the contract for paper supplies to WB Mason through Sursage? Wait a minute, where, is the motion to WB Mason or to Sursage?
To WB Mason.
Okay, to WB Mason.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Stevens.
Barger and Stevens, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, the next one is again for Sursage contract awards for water and sewer treatment chemicals, Roberts Chemicals and Harrods Chemicals. So in the packet, we have the information and the recommendations submitted for the award of water and sewer treatment chemicals for fiscal year 2023 to Harrods Chemicals and Roberts Chemicals. It's the same thing as Michael just mentioned, that these are bought off of a collaborative contract to save money, so it would be for the two, for the two companies that are noted there. Any comments, questions? Okay, if somebody would like to make a motion to award the contract for water and sewer treatment chemicals to Roberts Chemicals and Harrods Chemicals?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Stevens.
Barger and Stevens, all in favor? Unanimous. Next, Southeastern Regional Services Group contract awards for Department of Public Works Supplies, Dennis K. Burke Incorporated, LaRusso Corp., Classic Tractor Services LLC, G. Look's Construction Incorporated, Ferguson Waterworks, EJ USA Inc., Aggregant Industries, Northeast Region, Northeast Region Inc., Rashart and Sons, Borro Sand and Stone and T.L. Edwards. We have a memo submitted by Sursage for the award of DPW supplies for fiscal year 2023 to the groups that were named above, and there's a recommendation to award those contracts for DPW supplies fiscal year 2023 as well. So if somebody would like to make a motion?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Stevens.
Barger and Stevens, all in favor? Unanimous. So we are up to 15?
16.
Okay, 16. Acceptance of the minutes for June 9th and June 11th?
July 11th.
July 11th.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Stevens.
Barger and Stevens, all in favor? Unanimous. Next, town administrator notes.
I have none, thank you.
Michael, any assistant town administrator notes? Sorry. Craig?
I don't have any time from that moment, no.
Just from a hard day's ceremony, which I will miss, and I think maybe you'll plug this too with more detail than I'm going to, but as, as a veteran on the board, I'm very sad to be missing this. Our family is actually headed to Wisconsin tomorrow night, and we will not be here for what I'm sure will be another amazing turnout, thanks to all the work that Cory's done again to put this together and then all of those technical things, so.
Thank you.
Nothing to add tonight.
Okay, yes, so we hope to see people at 9 o'clock on this Friday morning at Town Hall. Cory Honan, who is our Veteran Services Officer, always puts together a really incredible event, very moving. I was recently at a different, at one of the summer concert series, and a woman that I didn't know came up, and she said that. I didn't know came up, and she said that she sees me at all of the veterans' events, and she said she really appreciates what the town and the supporters of the veterans do, it really meant a lot to her, so I thought that was really nice to hear that kind of feedback, and I hope people will be able to make it. Speaking of the summer concert series, we have another one coming up this Wednesday night, it's on the lawn of the front of Oaks Ames Hall. Last week, we, it was a little bit warmer weather, in the mid-eighties, and we had a hundred and seventy people attend the concert, it was great, and it's not just on the steps in the lawn of Oaks Ames Hall, we had people on the rockery, we had people on the base of the rockery, there were people out in front of the schoolhouse apartments, there were people along the sidewalks, it was really great, and also, it was a great, of varied ages, there were little kids, there were older people, it was loud, it was fun, the band was great, there's food and drinks there, people can feel free to bring their own, you know, sodas, waters, a shovel town brewery is there, there's pizza for purchase as well, so hopefully, people will come out, support our local performers, and even if it's hot, the night that it was in the nineties, we didn't have as many people there, but there's usually that type of time of night, it's a little bit cooler, there's a breeze cooler, and if you're sitting there, unless you're up dancing, you might, you might feel pretty cool, so we invite people to come. And then the last note that I make, I want to make is kind of on a more sad note, I just wanted to mention that Larry Moett, who has served on several boards and committees over the years for the town, sadly passed away this week, so I just want to say that we're grateful as a board for all that he did and contributed to our town over the years, and express our sympathies to his family. And last but not least, I want to thank ECAT, you know, we've got some new equipment here tonight, we've, ECAT's putting three camera people, at least three, more than that actually, at the summer concert series, those are broadcast on TV, and we've got some new faces with ECAT, so we really appreciate their partnership and all the great work that they do and the investment that they make to attend all our community events. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Stevens.
Barger and Stevens, all in favor? Unanimous. Great, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight.